The time is seven o'clock and we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for September 12th, 2016. Time is seven o'clock, I already said that, in city council chambers. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Keller. Mr. DeGenova.
Here.
Mr. Rohr.
Here.
Mr. Hellinger.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Mayor Riggle.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Keller. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer. Second by Mr. Jones. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, will you all please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance? And tonight, the invocation will be given by Kent Schaefer.
Hey, Rohr, we're thanking for this day, for all the many blessings in our lives through the opportunity to live here. We pray that you'll be with us, giving us wisdom and guidance to conduct our business like, especially pray your blessing and affection on our safety forces and our military personnel and put themselves in harm's way on our behalf. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, in this free republic where which stands, one nation under God, and visible with the liberty of the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
My pleasure.
Item four is the approval of motion summary of the regular meeting of council held August 8th, 2016. What is the wish of council?
Motion for approval.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Motion carries. And item five is the consent agenda. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Item A: Acceptance of the motion summaries for the Finance Committee meetings held March 7th and May 23rd, 2016. Item B: Acceptance of the motion summary for the Shade Tree Commission meeting held July 26th, 2016. Item C: Acceptance of the motion summary for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting held July 19th, 2016. Item E: Acceptance of the motion summary for the Parking and Safety Committee meeting held May 16th, 2016. Item F: Acceptance of the motion summary for the Planning Commission meeting held August 3rd, 2016. Item G: Resolution Number 16-39, a resolution accepting the amounts and rate as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for tax year 2016, budget year 2017. Item H: Resolution Number 16-40, a resolution accepting the public improvements to the communities at Glen Ross, Section 6. Item I: Resolution Number 16-41, a resolution accepting the public improvements for Heatherington, Phase 5. Item J: Establish September 26th, 2016, at 7:30 PM as the date and time for a public hearing and second reading of ordinance Number 16-85, an ordinance amending sections of the City of Delaware codified ordinances pertaining to parking and traffic. Sections 197.02, fee schedule as it pertains to parking tickets, 351.03 prohibit standing or parking places, 351.14 heavy vehicles and trailers, and 351.19 enforcement violation notice and waiver.
Thank you. What is the wish of council on the consent agenda?
I move for the adoption of the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, a second by Mr. Rohr. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Motion carries. Item six on the agenda is time set aside for letters, petitions, and public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if there's someone in the public that would like to come forward, please raise your hand at this time. Okay? If you'll come forward to the microphone, and as you get situated, we'll take your name and address, please, to the record.
My name is Mark Johnson. I live at 228 South Franklin Street here in Delaware. So I'm down just off of Harrison Street where Arby's and CVS Pharmacy is. The concerns I have is safety for my area of town, okay? And I can only speak for that area, especially around Woodward School. We all know that not everybody is responsible. And since they have taken out the concrete slab there where people park across the street from Woodward and will walk right across, that's gone. So really, they're jaywalking. And I know this sounds petty, but when I'm driving down there and I'm going five miles an hour and there's parked cars, there's a six-year-old child running out from one of those cars, even though I'm going five miles an hour, I hit that child, I'm going to be responsible because the pedestrian has the right of way, even though they can walk 15 steps to the corner. I don't know how that can be solved, but that is a serious issue there. Even on Harrison Street, one recommendation that I would make would be no parking. Washington and Harrison Street, everyone there has a driveway. Even across the street from the Harrison side of Woodward School, there's an actual alley there. People can drive down that alley, go right into the back part of their property, no problem at all. And that would also clean that area up. I mean, where grass used to be when I first moved here to Delaware, people have parked up on there, they're getting up on the sidewalks. As a matter of fact, the Habitat Humanity Home across the street there, brand-new sidewalk, just today, and I have pictures of this, people are parking their cars on the sidewalk. You can't even walk on the sidewalk, you have to walk around the cars, you know? The sidewalks, brand-new sidewalks are already cracked. Who's going to pay for that? It's not fair to that homeowner that he has to pay for those sidewalks now because people are parking up on there. And for real, as a former sergeant, I'm a retired sergeant from ORW, I don't want to see our police burden with this stuff, you know? I mean, they have more important things to do than the cross-guard patrol or, you know, who's parking on the sidewalks, for real. And I truly see that if they would just do no parking, especially on Harrison and Washington, that would solve a lot of that problem. And for real, you know, I mean, and I am a homeowner, by the way. Most of the people in that area probably rent. They don't care. They don't care about that neighborhood, and a lot of the people know of the problems that end of town has had, even right across the street from the school, you know? So those issues, I would like to see something done about if possible. And also, the big one on me is USA Tobacco Store. That place has been, I don't even know how they were able to build it so close to the sidewalk because I was always under the impression you had to be so many feet back from city property to build your buildings and stuff. And that's just right up on there. The weeds, everything is so overgrown. Again, I'm thinking of safety. How do I know there's not a predator in one of those bushes or something? And my grandbaby, of course, my granddaughter, I would never allow to walk in that neighborhood. But there's other children that do walk that neighborhood. Someone could jump out and grab them. And truthfully, I don't want Delaware to have the news all over itself because someone did this, you know? I mean, personally, I think the USA Tobacco Shops, since it's never even been completed, it needs to be torn down, you know? So I mean, I appreciate your time, and like I said, what I'm looking at more is safety and security, you know? And that's for the people of my city, you know? And one thing, I know this sounds bizarre, we did it at the prison, the jaywalking issue. I hate to say it, six-foot chain-link fence on the curb, Woodward side, the full length, you know? Emergency vehicles still can get around it if there was a problem, but that would force the lazy individuals to have to walk to the corner, to cross the street, you know? And I'd rather see that than to see a child get hit by a vehicle because they truly don't care. And as I'm making the scene here today, I told them that to their faces down there, and you know what? It didn't faze them one bit, you know? It's like that child, and you, what are you teaching them? You're teaching them bad behavior right off the bat. Where are they going to be at? You know, so... But thank you so much, I do appreciate your time.
We can have our Parking and Safety look into this. We have a committee for their commission for that, and we can have zoning look into the weeds in that corner down there where the tobacco, the gas station used to be there.
They just need to tear all the bushes out altogether.
Well, it's their responsibility. If they don't do it, then we do it and charge them, so we'll have to look into that.
They're charging double.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I do appreciate it.
If you give your phone number, email address to Elaine, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward at this time?
Did you want to on the London Apartments or?
Yeah. What did she, she had it was not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, is it on the agenda?
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, same then. We'll move on to introductions. Yeah, I think Sean's going to do it, yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. With great pleasure, that introduce to you Kelsey Miller, soon to be Kelsey Scott. She's getting married on the 23rd. Isn't that crazy? But she will be Kelsey Scott here very, very soon. She's our new Economic Development Specialist. She's been on the job for a little over two months now, has already hit the ground running and is doing a fantastic job integrating with our city and with our team here at the city. As you know, she did a fantastic job working on the Iron Man project and we look forward to seeing many more great things from her. She is a, she comes from us, to us from Marion, Ohio, just up the road, and she's a graduate of D. Ohio University.
Just a coincidence, right?
Welcome, Kelsey. Do you have anything you'd like to say tonight?
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you, Sean, for that wonderful introduction. I'm so excited to be working for the City of Delaware. I've one, I've always admired it growing up, and it's such an incredible opportunity to be with everyone here today and to be working for you and with you. So I'm looking forward to, again, working with you all very soon.
Thank you, Kelsey. Welcome again. You've done a great job so far.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is Alex Holman here? Okay. Are you looking over here for him?
Oh.
I was trying to talk to Alex, but I don't be confident.
Okay. All right. That'd be wonderful.
Are you welcome? So I have a confirmation. Whereas the City of Delaware has the responsibility to recognize occasions of outstanding significance, and whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern of the United States and the state of Ohio, and whereas the City of Delaware is taking steps towards awareness around the need and combat hunger and should provide additional resources that citizens need, whereas our city has committed to working with Mid-Ohio Food Banks in educating people about the role and importance of food banks and cantrons in addressing hunger and raising awareness and initiatives to develop more resources and attention to hunger issues, whereas more than 524,000 Ohioans rely on food provided by the Mid-Ohio Food Banks and hold, whereas the Mid-Ohio Food Banks distributed more than 59 million pounds of food in grocery from 2015 through its network of food factories, food kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. Whereas the food banks and partner agencies across the state, including Mid-Ohio Food Banks, will promote numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to efforts to end hunger in their local communities. Now therefore, I, John K. Riggle, and Mayor of the City of Delaware, do hereby proclaim September 2016 at Hunger Action Month in the City of Delaware, Ohio, and I urge every citizen to take this time this month to help combat, combat hunger in Delaware. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here. We would like to thank you.
My name is Kelsey Fox, and with the United States of Delaware County, I have a Delaware County hunger alliance. We have 16,440 food insecure individuals in our county, and I want to thank the City of Delaware so much for drawing attention to this very important issue while we look at folks who are in that demographic, we're talking about our friends and neighbors who are working very hard, but may have an emergency come up and need to know where their next meal is coming from, and we have a huge collection of food different agencies that have worked very hard throughout the course of the year to make sure those can be fed to everyone. Thank you very much for drawing attention to this issue. Thank you for your work on this. Thank you.
Let's do committee reports. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a Main Street meeting last week, just to get everybody up to speed. The, as you know, they're searching for the new executive director. I think they're, at the meeting, I think I heard there was 30 applicants from all over the country, and they're in the process of whittling that down. I think there's some coming back for some second interviews coming up, so hopefully by end of this month, first part of October, somebody's in place for that position. Also to talk about things already underway for the Christmas parade, I think the theme is Delaware's Christmas Story, if I recall, what it's called. So things are already well underway for the parade, so we'll have another nice parade this year. And the thing I just want to bring to council's attention is, we've talked about this before, and that is the flowers downtown, the potted plants, the hanging baskets. I think we did the hanging baskets as part of the Iron Man, and then Main Street is always taking care of the potted plants with the native Ohio growth that's in there, and there's always been, you know, some likes and don't likes, some, you know, whatever it is. But I talked to Tom about this, but I personally think, is of my opinion, I've spoken to a couple people about this, I don't think that's a Main Street Delaware issue, taking care of the flowers. I think that that's something that we should be taking care of as the City of Delaware. If Main Street organization were to go away, except for say flowers go away in downtown, I think our downtown, the way it's revitalized now is so wonderful, and so many people come downtown, I just think, you know, we should go into 2017's budget, you know, the city taking over the flowers, you know, that we can take that off of Main Street's game card, we can, you know, do what we want to do with the flowers and water. And I say that also in conjunction with I don't, I don't agree with reducing the funding to Main Street. You know, if we take the flowers from them, we shouldn't reduce their funding by $1,500, whatever it is. I think it's, we keep their funding the way it is, but we should consider taking over, you know, downtown flowers. I hope you guys will support that. I asked Tom to put that in his budget to submit what the cost would be. Any questions or any concerns about that? I guess we can talk about it now or later, but that's the direction I like to see us go. I think downtown is, you know, too beautiful and, you know, I said, Main Street's not going anywhere, but if it wasn't, you know, we'd have to do it anyhow, so I'd like to see us take that off.
I thought the time passed without taking the funds out of the community event and use it for that.
Sure. And for the record, Main Street's all in favor of that, too. I mean, I don't want to speak, I'm very, but that's the vibe I got when I left the meeting. Now, Sean can back that up or not, this impression we got that they'd be more happy to give that off, you know, the play as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. DeGenova?
Yeah, I had a busy two weeks. I have five items, if you bear with me. The Finance Committee met, and we discussed our audit, which we got an outstanding audit thanks to Dean and his staff, and I, hopefully everyone got to read it. We also talked on supplementals, the budget, the process of the budget for this year, and the jet that's going into effect for 10 years. We also scheduled a meeting for next Monday, the 19th, at 5:30. I had to change my schedule to meet it, but we're going to be discussing two items, the Refuge, which Price, Mr. Price brought to our attention, and the Cemetery, how we want to go forward on the Cemetery as far as getting ready for the 2017 budget. The next item is the Hayes Memorial. We're going to kick it off on President Hayes' birthday, October 4th. Has something downtown, it's on a Tuesday, to start a fundraiser, most of you keeping up with that. Our goal is $400,000 to build that memorial, and that'll be all by private funds, from citizens and others. Next item is a Veterans Breakfast, which SourcePoint's no longer handling this year. A committee has gotten together, and we're doing it November 11th, 9 o'clock, at the National Guard Armory, for breakfast for all veterans. So that'll be coming up also in the future. And then staff, Tom and I, and Ted and his group, met with the people of Glen Ross, and we have discussed the neighborhood park as well as the community park out there. And that was quite a meeting, we had 30, 40 people there, they're very much interested in going forward with the park out there and expand, as they're already as a neighborhood park. We had to give them a definition between a neighborhood park and a community park. And there's, if anyone doesn't know, I do now, know the difference and what is, what it takes to have either or. So let's see, I think I hit on any, and we also had, number five is Civil Service Commission met. We meet on the first Wednesday, and we updated the police and fire list, and we had tier four for finalist for captain, we have an opening for a captain in the fire department, and we had a brief discussion on the new fire station, number four going out on Cheshire. That's all I have.
Mr. Rohr?
Airport Commission met, that was what, three weeks ago now? Tom was there, we talked about a kind of a master plan, a strategic plan, and also we're recommending 5% increases in the hangar rates, which will be coming before council there, although it's not been raised since 2010, so I think we're due at this point.
Did you see the letter that went out? I think it shall send out last week about compliments on your board and how nice it was. Did you see that mail now? Thank you.
Good to hear that. Parks and Rec met, nothing major there. I have a couple comments, but I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Mr. Hellinger?
Shade Tree met, but really, nothing to really report on that.
Does Shade Tree want to take over the flowers?
I don't think so.
Mr. Schaefer?
Okay.
All right. Let's try and do, 7:30.
10, 11, 12.
Okay. Elaine, if you'll read 10, 11, and 12.
13, I guess.
Okay, and 13.
14, 15, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait a minute. I got 7:30, guys. I guess we have five minutes. All right, go, Parker. All right.
Ordinance Number 16-63, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for the Communities at Glen Ross, Section 8, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.967 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Eagle Walk Road, White Fawn Run, and Gray Owl Drive. Ordinance Number 16-64, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for the Communities at Glen Ross, Section 8, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.967 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Eagle Walk Road, White Fawn Run, and Gray Owl Drive. Ordinance Number 16-65, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for the Communities at Glen Ross, Section 9, consisting of 29 single-family lots on approximately 11.069 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Crickstone Drive and Silver Fox Way. Ordinance Number 16-66, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for the Communities at Glen Ross, Section 9, consisting of 29 single-family lots on approximately 11.069 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Crickstone Drive and Silver Fox Way. Ordinance Number 16-67, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for the Communities at Glen Ross, Section 10, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.234 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on White Fawn Run and Gray Owl Drive.
You said she could do it.
I'm just making sure she's taking a breath in there, you know? Madam Mayor, members of council, these cases were presented to you at your last meeting. This is a subject of a large planned mixed-use overlay zoning district, and therefore, final plans and final plats are required section by section. Just to refresh your memory, Section 8 is in yellow up here with 34 single-family lots, Section 9 is in green with 29 single-family lots, and Section 10 is in blue with 34 single-family lots. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I believe you wanted to take this to another reading, which is this one.
Any questions for Dave? Any motions? We have three minutes. We're not going to be drawn, but we can start.
I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on Ordinance 16-63.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Motion carries.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on Ordinance 16-64. Second.
Question by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
I move to approve of Ordinance 16-66. Second.
Question by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for the approval of Ordinance 16-63. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, will you all please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance? And tonight, the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda. At this time, will you all please stand for the invocation of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the invocation of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda? At this time, will you all please stand for the indication of the wish of council on the consent agenda?
Mr. Price brought our attention and the cemetery. How we want to go forward on the cemetery as far as getting ready for the 2017 budget. The next item is the Hayes Memorial. We're going to kick it off on President Hayes' birthday, October 4th. Has something downtown, it's on a Tuesday, to start a fundraiser. Most of you keeping up with that. Our goal is $400,000 to build that memorial. And that'll be all by private funds from citizens and others. Next item is Veterans Breakfast, which SourcePoint's no longer handling this year. A committee has gotten together and we're doing it November 11th, 9 o'clock at the National Guard Armory for breakfast for all veterans. So that'll be coming up also in the future. And then staff, Tom and I, and Ted and his group, met with the people of Glen Ross. And we have discussed the neighborhood park as well as the community park out there. And that was quite a meeting. We had 30, 40 people there. They're very much interested in going forward with the park out there and expand as they're already as a neighborhood park. We had to give them a definition between a neighborhood park and a community park. And if anyone doesn't know, I do now, know the difference and what it takes to have either or. So let's see, I think I hit on any. And we also had, number five is Civil Service Commission met. We meet on the first Wednesday. And we updated the police and fire list. And we had tier four finalists for captain. We have an opening for a captain in the fire department. And we had a brief discussion on the new fire station, number four going out on Cheshire. That's all I have.
Mr. R.
Airport Commission met, that was about three minutes ago now. Tom was there, we talked about a kind of a master plan, a strategic plan, and also we're recommending 5% increases in the hangar rates, which will come before council. And that has not been raised since 2010, so I think we're due at this point.
Did you see the letter that went out? I think it shall send out last week about compliments on your board and how nice it was. Did you see that email? Thank you.
Good to hear that. Parks and Rec met, nothing major there. I have a couple of comments, but I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Mr. Hellinger.
Shade Tree met, but really, nothing to really report on that.
Does Shade Tree want to take over flowers?
I don't think so.
Mr. Schaefer. All right, let's try and do 7:30. Okay. Elaine, if you'll read 10, 11, and 12.
13, I guess.
Okay, and 13.
14, 15, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait a minute, I got 7:30, guys. I guess we have five minutes. All right, go, Parker, hurry.
Ordinance number 16-63, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, Section 8, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.967 acres, zoned R2 PMU. One-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Eagle Walk Road, White Fawn Run, and Gray Owl Drive. Ordinance number 16-64, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, Section 8, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.967 acres, zoned R2 PMU. One-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Eagle Walk Road, White Fawn Run, and Gray Owl Drive. Ordinance number 16-65, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, Section 9, consisting of 29 single-family lots on approximately 11.069 acres, zoned R2 PMU. One-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Crickstone Drive and Silver Fox Way. Ordinance number 16-66, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, Section 9, consisting of 29 single-family lots and approximately 11.069 acres, zoned R2 PMU. One-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Crickstone Drive and Silver Fox Way. Ordinance number 16-67, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, Section 10, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.234 acres, zoned R2 PMU. One-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on White Fawn Run and Gray Owl Drive. Ordinance number 16-68, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross, Section 10, consisting of 34 single-family lots on approximately 10.234 acres, zoned R2 PMU. One-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on White Fawn Run and Gray Owl Drive.
You said she could do it.
I'm just making sure she's taking a breath in there. Madam Mayor, members of council, these cases were presented to you at your last meeting. This is a subject of a large planned mixed-use overlay zoning district. And therefore, final plans and final plats are required section by section. Just to refresh your memory, Section 8 is in yellow up here with 34 single-family lots. Section 9 is in green with 29 single-family lots. And Section 10 is in blue with 34 single-family lots. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I believe you wanted to take this to another reading, which is this one.
Any questions for Dave? Any motions? We have three minutes. We'll have to be drawn, but we can start.
Couple of minutes. I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-63.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Move for approval, ordinance 16-63.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries.
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-64.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for the approval, ordinance 16-64.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Okay, I'll move to suspend the rules on ordinance 16-65.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for approval, ordinance 16-65.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-66.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
I move for approval, ordinance 16-66.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-67.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for approval, ordinance 16-67.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, 7:30, you have to stop, sorry.
So close.
I know, so close. Okay, item 16 and 17, I have 7:30 public hearings. So Elaine, if you'll read these into the record.
And Madam Mayor, I think 16, 17, and 18 all go together.
Excuse me? Well, I'm looking at the public hearings.
Ordinance number 16-72, an ordinance approving a rezoning for Delaware Housing Corporation from B3 Community Business District to R6 Multi-Family Residential District for London Town Apartments on approximately 0.88 acres, parcel number 419-122-01-006-000, and located at 300 Chelsea Street. Ordinance number 16-73, an ordinance approving an amendment of the comprehensive plan for Delaware Housing Corporation on property designated as commercial on the future land use map to moderate density for London Town Apartments on approximately 0.88 acres, parcel number 419-122-01-006-000, and located at 300 Chelsea Street. Ordinance number 16-74, an ordinance approving a combined preliminary and final development plan for Delaware Housing Corporation for London Town Apartments on approximately 0.88 acres, parcel number 419-122-01-006-000, and located at 300 Chelsea Street.
Thank you. Mr. Affleck.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is another one that might have taken longer to read in the record than to go over with you. But the London Town Apartments are located on London Road between Liberty and Washington, as you can see on the location map, excuse me. The existing zonings are six multifamily, but as you can see in the northeast corner, there's a parcel that is currently zoned V3, and that's the reason for the rezoning as well as the comprehensive plan amendment in this case. That property was purchased by the entity that owns London Town Apartments in November 2014. It's approximately 0.88 acres of ground. And so the aerial photograph makes it even clearer why it makes sense for them to have bought this parcel and square off their property. You can see parking lots that end right at this parcel line in the small building. If I can get the pointer to work here. Right here is the community center building. And so the next page is, what they'd like to do is obviously rezone the property to be in performance with the rest of their property, which makes sense. But also extend the parking lot slightly to service the needs of their community as well as that community room. And also put in a large playground area, which they want to put in and move part of it, but really expand that playground area, and that's in the green here. The parking lot's in the yellow. Your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval at their August meeting as the staff. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I would say, I know this is the first or the second reading, but the applicant, I think, and staff would ask for your indulgence to consider suspending your rules as they're looking to pave this parking lot yet this year. We're already in mid-September, plants will shut down at some point in time. And I'll let the applicant speak to that more during their comments. But happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the staff? Would the applicant like to add anything to this if you come forward?
Sure.
And give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Gary Burley. This is the address of 1601 Bethel Row, Columbus, Ohio, 43320.
If you can pull the microphone because there are recordings, thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, council members, for listening to me this evening. Give me a couple of minutes here. We've been working on this project for a period of time. We would like to suspend the rules and ask you to take action this evening. A couple of reasons is the season's short. We do have our RFPs, the scope and specs, ready to go. Contractors have been selected, but we have not put out the RFP based on your approval for this project. We don't want to waste contractors' time spending something that's not going to happen this year. The additional parking is going to be used for the community center primarily, and they do have a lot of activities, but we're short on parking. With the holidays coming up and the onsite of the plant closing here very shortly, we can put out these bids and get this project completed this year in time for the holidays. We're also adding a second playground in for the children. We have over 102 children, ages from 5 to 12, and there's 74 of them little critters. And they need some distractions, and this will assist in that. So I would really, truly appreciate your moving to vote on this this evening so we can move forward. Questions?
In the planning commission day, was there any neighbors come forward or anybody just did not like this plan at all?
No.
It was pretty solid.
Yeah.
Any questions for the app there? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a beautiful city here. I'm three years new to Ohio, and I've been here, and it's really incredible what you're doing. Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of council?
I know Gary's been trying to get a hold of me. It is my ward. We were debating on whether it was the second ward or third ward, and since we changed it a couple of years ago, that side of London Road is the third, and the other side is the second. So with that in mind, I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 1672. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
I move for the approval of 1672 as submitted. Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries.
Move for the suspension of rules on 1673. Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for the adoption of 1673 as submitted. Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussions? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries.
Move for suspension of rules on 1674. Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for the adoption of 1674 as submitted. Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
We'll move back up to item 15, ordinance 16-68.
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-68.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for approval, ordinance 16-68.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Now, you'll read 19 and 20 together.
Ordinance number 16-75, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Pulte Homes for Heatherington Phase 6, consisting of 32 single-family lots on approximately 9.020 acre zone, R3 PRD, one-family residential district with a planned residential development district, and located on Climber Street, Elbridge Street, and Burgoyne Street. Ordinance number 16-76, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for Pulte Homes for Heatherington Phase 6, consisting of 32 single-family lots on approximately 9.020 acre zone, R3 PRD, one-family residential district with a planned residential development district, and located on Climber Street, Elbridge Street, and Burgoyne Street.
Thank you. I love these street names.
Yeah, they're getting hard to spell. Madam Mayor, members of council, this again is taken to another reading and presented at your last council hearings. I'm just going to fast forward here and show you that the section we're talking about of 32 homes here at Heatherington is shown in blue on this map. That leaves two sections left to go. They're outlined in blue, the sections 7 and 8. It combines in total about 70 lots left in this subdivision, and it'll be complete. So at your pleasure, I'm happy to answer any of the questions, but this was presented at your last meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Affleck? What is the wish of council?
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-75.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for approval, ordinance 16-75.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move to suspend rules on 1676. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Move the adoption of 1676 as submitted. Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, item 21, ordinance 16-77 and 16-78. Yeah, 21 and 22, please.
Ordinance number 16-77, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat, Westport Homes for Lantern Chase, Phase 2, Section 6, Part 2, consisting of 45 single-family lots on approximately 30.316 acre zone, R3, one-family residential district, and located on Glemmsbury Drive, Cahnott Place, Cedar Creek Street, and Lanthorn Pond Drive. Excuse me. Ordinance number 16-78, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat, Westport Homes for Lantern Chase, Phase 2, Section 6, Part 3, consisting of 35 single-family lots on approximately 8.049 acre zone, R3, one-family residential district, and located on Cahnott Place and Marblehead Drive. on Conia Place and Marblehead Drive.
I think we should change these names. I think we should ask them, say so in these. Go with this.
You can't. It's harder than you think. We need to have name roads and not have duplicates. And I don't think we have dinosaurs allowed there on our street. Maybe council change it. Madam Mayor, members of council, this is... These are two cases for the last sections of Lantern Chase, Phase Two, Section Six, just to keep the confusion going with the road names, I guess, but parts two and three. This is in the far north section of this subdivision, which actually started in 1998. So it's been ongoing for quite some time. And I think probably everybody feels as if it's time to wrap it up at this point. And these two phases will do that. You'll see part three and part two outlined here. If you can't see that, part three's on the right side of the screen. Part two is a larger part. It's larger. It is street zoned as R3 Single Family Residential. Part two is larger because on the aerial, you can see a large wooded area with streams. Originally, back in 98, and then continuing for the better part of 10, 15 years, this subdivision was to be built up into the woods, removing the trees, and had quite a few more house lots proposed for it. And now, under the amended preliminary plan that came forward to you just a few years ago, some lots were removed, and the vast majority of this wooded acreage was slated for preservation. These two sections that are being brought forward to you tonight are completely in accordance with that amended preliminary plan from a few years ago as well. Here, I've kept the orientation the same. It's a little hard to see the wooded area, but it's up at the top, and some of the gray shading is some wetland areas within that wooded area. But the sections in question here are the yellow and the green. You've already approved the one in the blue about a year ago, and that would complete the subdivision. Westport Homes, of note, has come in to finish this, has started as an MI subdivision, and continued up to this point. Westport has picked up some lots here or there in the city and developed some houses on those individual lots, but this would really be the first... It's not a complete subdivision, but a... At least three sections of subdivision, more than single-family home lots, and we'd be happy to welcome them in a bigger way to the city, and they've been good for us thus far. I look forward to working with them in the future. Now, your planning commission did recommend, at their September meeting, unanimous approval of these cases. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Efflon?
I guess I would just note that these are just final plats. This is straight zoning, so there are no final plans that come along with these, just straight plats.
Motion, counsel?
My wish is to go to a second reading.
Okay. Anybody else want to say it like?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll take 21 and 22 to another reading then. Item 23 is ordinance 16-79. Will you please read this on the record?
Ordinance number 16-79, an ordinance approving the sale of the Street Department 2000 International 4900 dump truck that has outgrown its useful serviceable life.
Hello, Mr. Farina.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, from my new seat. This is a standard requirement that we bring these issues before you when a piece of a city equipment may be sold or auctioned for greater than $5,000 value. In this case, it's a 2000 International 4900 dump truck that's beyond its useful service life. That's determined when the cost of maintenance, repair continues to increase. Our dependability on the vehicle is greatly reduced, and our liability and safety risk starts to increase with the equipment. When it gets to that stage, your recommendation is usually made through our fleet department that vehicles should be put on GOV deals and auctioned off. In this particular case, we're predicting the auction value will be greater than $5,000, requiring council approval for that piece of equipment. This is just a first reading tonight on this, but I can answer any questions regarding this issue.
Any questions?
Does this go on the government bid's website, then?
Yes, GOV deals is the site we use. We use it for all of our equipment, regardless of value.
How much do you think it will be worth?
Well, we're predicting a little auction for more than $5,000, so we have to go through this action. We've seen some of these trucks go as high as like $8,000, $9,000, depending upon what the demand is right now for equipment. We're generally very up for answer questions regarding the condition of the vehicle, condition of transmission, brake lines, things like that. Not all of our equipment can be driven off sites. A lot of times it has to be towed off or trailered off, and we let all people auctioning know that.
And then does that money go back into maintenance fund or purchase of a new vehicle?
It'll generally go back in the fund if the asset came out of it.
Okay.
So we use that service. Do you have to set a minimum bid?
Yep, we'll set a minimum bid. In this case, it will be $5,000. And then we'll also set parameters for the bid timeframe, how long it'll be up for auction. Generally, we don't keep things on for auction for more than, most of these, a couple of weeks because it tends to move fairly quickly. A lot of folks tune into this auction site and get a lot of equipment off of it.
And how soon do you get paid for that? How soon do they?
It's immediate. They have to bring checks in to pick the vehicle up.
Any other questions? Do you want to take this to another reading?
I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-79. Second.
Who said second?
I did.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I'll move for the approval on 1679. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
Item 20 is consideration of ordinance 16-80. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 16-80, an ordinance supplementing the 2016 appropriations ordinance to increase funding for the design of the Glen Parkway extension north to Berlins Station Road.
I'll take that also, Mr. Efflon. If you have the picture, you can... The graphic, it's the same graphic, I believe, included in the packet. What we're asking for tonight, again, first reading, is funding to begin the design portion of the next section of Glen Parkway from just north of Sycamore up to Berlins Station Road. The graphic in the packet here shows, to the left is, you can see the end of existing Glen Parkway. In this case, north is oriented to the right of the screen. So the light... Two light lines is the existing Glen Parkway, and the dark green section is 2,300 feet of additional Glen Parkway that will be constructed up to about the, I call, a second curve of Berlins Station. If you're familiar with that part right there, there's two sharp curves terminating, and what we're proposing is a roundabout intersection to help deal with some of the issues on Berlins Station, as well as bring a good controlled traffic maintained access point. And that's the alignment right now. I want to call it preferred alignment. We've had significant discussion with the county engineer's office as to how we can make this interim connection into Berlins Station Road. Specific concerns are the proximity to the railroad directly to the east of this proposed intersection. So as I mentioned, the funding tonight would be to begin the design portion and also right of way acquisition services, not the actual cost of the right of way purchase, which could be significant for this project, but to get us through the process to enable us to purchase right of way within our budget next year. We'll actually have identified funding for the next phases of this project. Would hope to be finished with design in 2017, as well as significantly through right of way, if not complete, and then be able to... In a position to bid the work out in late 17, early 18, and be under construction and completion by, hopefully, in concert with Olentangie School opening up in that area, or at least by late summer to early fall, completion of the project.
Just for council's information, the fourth high school proposed that they've already broken ground for is east of this property. So two years from really now is the goal, to have the road completed.
So Bill, for all our students in the room, just 360,000 is just for the planning of the road?
That's correct. We cover the design.
How long is this section?
It's 2,300 feet.
And what will this cost?
This road... This section of road will be about $3, $3.5 million, is what we're estimating, an additional $1 million for the right of way.
See, actually, Penn's going now.
Altogether, it could be as much. With the large contingency without any design at this point, with a large contingency, we're estimating close to a $5 million project. We hope to get that contingency reduced once we understand the final... Fine details of the project. There are jurisdictional streams we have to cross in this, and we have a lot of interaction to do with the county engineer and with county commissioners because this road is... Parts of this road are outside of jurisdiction, as is Berlins Station Road. So we'll need some legislation with the county and the county engineer's office in order to go ahead and construct this.
Thank you.
And I think the other thing to point out for the public and for the students is the funding of this project is not a general fund... It's not the general fund of the city. This is actually tax increment revenue that the city has set aside. At one point, we set them aside for a bridge that was going over the railroad tracks. Council will recall that it took action about two years ago to reallocate, repurpose those dollars specifically for this improvement, as well as a couple of other associated improvements along Glen Parkway. So those TIF revenues are coming into the city, or actually, they're coming into the county, they get remitted to the city, and they're available to be spent for this purpose. But this is not a general fund obligation of the city. But we'll provide a northern terminus to this Parkway that we started over 10 years ago. And for a lot of the residents in that area, this will provide easier access to 71, then you'll go north and east on Berlins Station Road to Old State Road and up to 71. So it does provide that northern... Some northern relief. Dave, I don't know if you can just pull up Google Earth real quickly if that's possible. If not, just imagine that there's a... The next section is really between Berlins Station Road and Curve Road. That's kind of the null authority piece that hasn't been put in place yet. But when and if that gets done, and that gets connected to the existing Glen Parkway, Glen Road that would be improved, you would then have, not a bypass per se, but you would have another access point around the eastern part of Delaware.
A lot of those people will be able to go to Kohl's real quick.
If you get that middle section, that northern section, that middle section improved, absolutely.
Any other questions for Bill?
As Bill pointed out, we will have reflected in the budget that I'll present to you on November 15th, we will have the recommended funding for the balance of the project, just estimates at that point, so you can approve it. Hopefully, you'll approve it as part of the budget process.
And again, this is first reading tonight. We can take it to another reading.
Motion, counsel, take the second reading. All right, let's move on to item 25, which is ordinance number 16-81. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 16-81, an ordinance supplementing the 2016 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for cleanup and repairs to City Hall associated with the June 23rd basement flooding and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and to provide for the timely repair to the elevator serving City Hall, restoring required ADA access to all levels, and as such, will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Mr. Farina?
That will be me also. Again, the fact sheet is pretty self-explanatory, but on that date, if you recall, we had inundated with heavy rains. Inundated our sanitary sewer system downtown, and our backflow prevention valve malfunctioned in our basement, allowing floodwaters with sewage into our basement. About 10 inches of water came into the basement, damaged a lot of records, some equipment, and a lot of cleanup effort due to that. We were able to clean it up, but the cost of the cleaning was substantial with the professional services we have to use, as well as the records that needed to be salvaged for public record requirement had to be cleaned and sanitized. So the total cost of the project has... The work had been completed, and we covered that cost under the existing facility maintenance fund, but we've depleted that fund now down to near zero. And we need to do a supplemental here to cover these costs, which will be reimbursable through our insurance claim that Jackie Walker has been working with us on. So what we're looking for tonight is really to supplemental to $40,000 to put the funding back in that fund for the other facility maintenance issues that will come up throughout the remainder of the year.
I would like to thank you for saving my office. I heard they opened the elevator door, and it was coming that way, and you guys got rid of us, so thank you. Any questions for Bill? Any motions?
All the work's been done.
All of it's completed now.
I move to suspend rules on 1681.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of 1681.
Emergency clause.
Oh, move for the adoption of emergency clause.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the adoption of 1681.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGenova, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
And item 26 is consideration of ordinance 16-82. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 16-82, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force program for reimbursement of overtime incurred from assisting with OCDETF investigations and to execute successor agreements between the same parties in substantially similar conditions and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to enable the city to enter into the agreement in a timely manner to ensure that the city will receive reimbursement for overtime costs and to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and as such, will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Good evening, Chief DeGenova.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. All right, it's going to be tough. Anytime you have an abbreviation like that, it's going to be difficult. OCDEF is the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force, and we participate in those investigations. This agreement will allow the city manager to sign off on any agreement for any reimbursement for overtime, starting with fiscal year 2017, which actually starts October 1st. So attached to your fact sheet is a sample agreement for a previous operation we did that's very similar. We have to do one of those every time prior to any operation, so we want to have the ability to do those as soon as possible after October 1st. And this is somewhat related to the next item as well.
Questions for the team?
And just to clarify, rather than having each one come forward, this... We haven't done this forever, but this would give us the authority to sign each of those going forward so you won't see this again.
I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 1682.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move to enact the emergency clause of ordinance 16-82.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move to approve ordinance number 16-82.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
And item 27 is consideration of ordinance 16-83. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 16-83, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement, an MOU, between the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement Homeland Security Investigations and the Delaware Police Department, designating Delaware police detectives assigned to the Delaware County Drug Task Force as HSI Customs Task Force officers, and to execute any subsequent agreements between the same parties with substantially similar conditions and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to enable the city to enter into the agreement in a timely manner to ensure that the city will receive reimbursement for overtime costs and to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and as such, will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is an agreement that will allow our two detectives assigned to the Drug Task Force to be considered HSI agents. It's a very limited capacity, but it allows them to work with federal agencies when there are local investigations that become federal investigations or may be prosecuted federally, and also makes that overtime eligible for overtime reimbursement. The need for the emergency clause is this has to be submitted by September 16th with a signature to be eligible for the next federal fiscal year, which starts October 1st.
Any questions by council?
The agenda says HIS, but I think it should be HSI. So is the ordinance correct, I guess? The part in parentheses that says HIS slash...
I have HSL.
In the fact sheet, it's HSI, and the ordinance, it says, in the first whereas, it does say HIS.
HSI.
It's HSI.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 16-83.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move to enact the emergency clause on 16-83.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move to approve 16-83.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
And item 28 is consideration of ordinance 16-84. Elaine, if you'll please read this on the record.
Ordinance number 16-84, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into memorandum of understanding with the multi-agency crisis intervention team and execute successor agreements at subsequent years provided they're substantially similar.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a, a request to, uh, allow the city manager to sign our yearly agreement with the multi-agency crisis intervention team. That is, that is a team that was formed, uh, several years ago. Then Chief Martin started it, and we have carried on and, 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 uh, built on that. Uh, right now, we, we are on that team. We work some with fire department on that team as well, and this agreement would allow us to, um, bring in any city department that might be necessary. Uh, what this team primarily does is we get together and meet on a quarterly basis, but work on a daily basis with Central Ohio Mental Health, uh, with the Board of Developmental Disabilities, with some of the service providers, be it housing, or, or job services, or, or daycare, and we all meet as a team and discuss, uh, any problem cases. So this allows us to do that. It allows for confidentiality. Uh, and, and what we'll do is when there is a client, uh, that needs some extra care, we assign a team or we form a team around it, and it allows for better communication and shorter problems. Uh, it's been very beneficial in, uh, keeping some of the frequent consumers from having severe issues, uh, or health issues because of their condition. It's been very beneficial, and it's, it's on a voluntary basis as well, so the consumers that are part of these teams have volunteered to be on the teams and have, you know, they have the full power to be part or to back out, but it's, it's been a very beneficial relationship. Uh, this task force has led to, you know, other projects that we've worked on and that we have done and that we are actually a model in the state now, and we're, you know, we're involved with the Attorney General's Office, so this is a very beneficial agreement. Uh, this will allow the city manager to, to sign the yearly agreement provided it doesn't change, and this has been the same agreement.
Okay. Any questions by council? Any motions by council?
Make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-84.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move to approve ordinance 16-84.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
And item 29 is consideration of ordinance number 16-85. May I, if you'll please, read this in the record?
Ordinance number 16-85, an ordinance amending sections of the city of Delaware's codified ordinances pertaining to parking and traffic. Sessions 197.02, fee schedule as it pertains to parking tickets. 351.03 prohibits standing or parking places. 351.14 heavy vehicles and trailers. And 351.19 enforcement violation notice and waiver.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a, essentially a cleanup, uh, piece of legislation over several pieces of, um, uh, legislation we noticed needed tweaked from the fee structure reschedule and from some, um, some things we've noticed that were more or less confusing or, or oversights. Uh, the first, um, we realized that we didn't include one section, parking over the lines, in the fee schedule, so it adds that, uh, and, and adds the fee to the fee schedule in 197.02. Uh, there is also, um, we had a parking issue on North Union Street with the, uh, with the construction up there. There's been a lot more street parking, and there's also a mid-block crosswalk. And with the activity up there, people were parking right up to the crosswalk, and so we went up there and started writing warnings and then some enforcement and realized the actual language of our section says crosswalk at an intersection. So this amendment would strike at an intersection and allow us to enforce parking within 20 feet of any crosswalk, either mid-block or at an intersection. Uh, the next section, 351.14, uh, is, is just using more current language in terms of, uh, what you can park on the street and specifically truck weights. So, um, it goes to class, oh, for instance, you can't park more than a class three on a street, which is, which is consistent with what we currently do, but we, uh, had a conversation with a gentleman who couldn't understand why a, uh, a, a work van, which is legally parked on the street, but it was a work van, was allowed to park there, and we started talking, well, because the law says you're allowed to have a half-ton vehicle on the street, and then the conversation went, yeah, but he's got probably a ton of property in the truck, and it's more than half a ton, and, uh, so it seemed like, you know, the actual half-ton, three-quarter-ton, one-ton is really old nomenclature, and you can probably carry more than a ton and a half-ton, so it seemed a lot cleaner and easier to understand if we went to the class-three language in that section. And then the last section is 351.19. It actually brings us into compliance with the Ohio Revised Code with our handicap, uh, parking violations. We currently have our own fee structure on there, but, uh, we found that we actually, by state, by the Ohio Revised Code, are required to have, um, in any local ordinance, a fee, a, a fine of at least $250 and no more than $500, uh, as opposed to our, I think, our current $40. So this would, uh, up a first-time offense to $250, a second-time offense to $300, and then the third-time offense to $500.
Chief, am I correct in, in pointing out that while the original fine is higher, it's capped lower than what we had before?
Correct. I think our, our third offense was.
I think it was like a thousand dollars previously.
So it, it, it brings us into compliance with the, with the range that the Ohio Revised Code requires. And, uh, we, this can go to a second reading as well.
We have a public hearing on this. Yeah.
Question for you, Chief. How, how do you track the number of violations? And, and over what timeframe? At one location? Is it just the same offender at multiple locations?
We have, you know, we have a, a database now where we can track offenders. Uh, it's, it's kind of an in-house database, and it's, you know, it's, it's not the easiest, you know, it's, it's not very fluid, but it's, it's workable, and we've sort of been in a holding pattern, uh, with the, with the parking study and, and also with the levy, just looking at updating our software, our parking software, also our billing software to allow us to allow bill payment online for some of, some of the parking violations. So we can track it. I can tell you that, you know, we have two parking control officers. They can pretty much tell you who's doing what and where, so they can track it that way, and if they see something they think's a problem, they can call it in, or they will either, you know, I think right now we're generating a list of the, of the frequent flyers so that if they do come to an enforcement that has an enhancement, they have something they can look at, and it errors on the side of missing a frequent flyer as opposed to rolling someone up that actually isn't a, a frequent parking violator. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll take this to another reading.
Public hearing.
Right. Okay, item 30, thank you, Chief, is consideration of ordinance 16-86. If you'd please read this in the record?
Ordinance number 16-86, an ordinance supplementing the 2016 appropriations ordinance to provide funding for the conceptual drawings for the Ruth Rafferty-B Hayes Memorial and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to enable the city to enter into the agreement in a timely manner and to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mrs. Lott.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the ordinance in front of you is, um, an ordinance that is needed in order to pay for the conceptual drawings for the Ruth Rafferty-B Hayes Memorial. Um, the, we have a small group of very committed citizens that would like to see our, um, uh, former president memorialize downtown, and in order to, um, maintain a 501(c)(3) status, they went through the Delaware Community Foundation, had donations, uh, funneled through the Community Foundation. Community Foundation cannot write checks, um, to non-public entities, and so we set, set up and said, we'll be the public entity. Uh, we worked with the design firm, OHM. They put forth a design, and, um, so this is basically legislation to allow us to take to, we're gonna get the check from the Delaware Community Foundation, and then we will turn around and write the check to OHM, so it's essentially a wash.
Any questions from Mrs. Lott?
You know, I'm just real quick. I, I meant to forward on everybody. This is all side note here.
Okay.
But I came across this article online that listed the, um, idiot counties, the most famous person from each county, you know, in Delaware listed. Rufford is, you know, the most famous person that come from the county. Then they did make reference in the article that it's odd that the city of Delaware doesn't have any reference to their most famous residents, so we're on the right track, I guess.
I thought I was the most.
You, you came in second.
Yeah, we do have a high school.
Yeah. Well, there's no statue, no, really reference.
I might also add that, uh, I think it was six or seven of us contributed out of our own pockets to equal the funding that was necessary for the OHM.
I will move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-86.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
I'll move to approve ordinance 16-86.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call please. There's an emergency clause.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
In that case, I will move for the adoption of the emergency clause on ordinance 16-86.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
And now on behalf of President Hayes, I move to approve ordinance 16-86.
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. DeGenova. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 31 is consideration of ordinance 16-87. May I, if you'll please, read this in the record?
Ordinance number 16-87, an ordinance supplementing the 2016 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for the workers' compensation professional services and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, property, health, safety, welfare of the city. Emergency clause is necessary in order to find the insurance for the 2016, 2017 coverage year by July 31st, 2016. As such, this ordinance will be in full force, full force immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mrs. Lott?
Thank you. And, uh, the ordinance put before you is, uh, a supplemental ordinance, uh, for our workers' compensation professional services. In 2016, we've, we have, um, experienced an, um, uptick of the number of workers' compensation cases that we feel that is in the, uh, we, meaning myself and, uh, the DAS staff, feel that it's in the best, city's best interest to, um, engage legal counsel, uh, that specializes in workers' compensation in order to best protect the city's, um, uh, rights in these cases. Uh, we've also had to do a number of independent medical examinations, which are expensive, um, except due to the safety forces. And, um, to that end, we, um, are running, uh, quite a bit higher than what we have in the past. We don't think this is a trend, uh, because we've always been well under our $10,000 budget, uh, so, but we are going to need, in order to finish out, looking down what's coming up, what we suspect is coming up, uh, an additional $20,000. The good news is that we are asking that this money be brought, uh, from the fund balance, which has a $1.9 million fund, uh, balance there, so it doesn't need to come from the general fund. I'm happy to answer any question you might have. Any questions? Any motions?
Sure. I'll move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-87.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move for you, uh, approve of the emergency clause on ordinance 16-87.
Uh, second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
And we'll move to approve of ordinance 16-87.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 32 is consideration of ordinance 16-88.
Ordinance number 16-88, an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for the municipal court indigent driver interlock alcohol monitoring fund and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason to provide timely utilization of funds available for the alcohol monitoring program in municipal, and as such will be in full force and be in effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. Selsa?
Thank you. This, uh, corrects a posting error that occurred, uh, in the past. These two funds come in from the court and they go into two different, we have to segregate the amounts, ones for alcohol treatment, indigent alcohol treatment, the others for indigent alcohol monitoring, uh, where they put things on, and, uh, because of that, the appropriation at the court submit 2016, uh, was off, and this corrects that, doesn't impact any additional spending, it just, uh, puts the appropriation in right fund. Entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions? Any motions?
Motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 16-88.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion to enact the emergency clause on 16-88.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Move to approve ordinance number 16-88.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hellinger, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. DeGenova.
Yes.
Mr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion carries. I guess you're gonna read together 33, 34, and 35. How's that? Sweet. Sweet.
Pertences.
Thanks for that.
Okay. Ordinance number 16-89, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximal principal amount of $4,250,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of refunding bonds previously issued by the city for the purpose of paying the cost of various public infrastructure proj- projects and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason that this ordinance is required to be immediately effective in order to issue and sell the bonds, which is necessary to enable the city to take advantage of comparable interest rates and realize the savings and interest costs by refunding the refunded bonds and to coordinate the sale of the bonds with other bonds of the city. Wherefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage. Ordinance number 16-90, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the Ordinance number sixteen dash ninety, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximal principal amount of four million dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of enhancing the municipal fire safety facilities by constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new fire station and otherwise improving the site therefore together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency. Emergency clauses, ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason that this ordinance is required to be immediately effective in order to issue and sell the bonds, which is necessary to enable the city to timely enter into contracts for the construction of the improvement and to coordinate the sale of the bonds with other bonds of the city, wherefore this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage. And ordinance number sixteen dash ninety-one, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximal principal amount of four hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of renovating, rehabilitating, otherwise improving the city's public works building by replacing the roof together with all necessary appurtenances thereto and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason that this ordinance is required to be immediately effective in order to issue and sell the bonds, which is necessary to enable the city to timely enter into contracts for the construction of the improvement and to coordinate the sale of the bonds with other bonds of the city, wherefore this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
I guess I should clap for you. Thank you. Mr. Stelzer?
Thank you, uh, three ordinances, uh, relate to the issuance of long-term debt for a couple different, uh, projects of the city, the first ordinance, uh, sixteen dash eighty-nine is actually a refunding issue, uh, of bonds that were issued in two thousand and six for multiple purposes, uh, the interest rates are such now that, uh, those bonds had a call provision of December first, two thousand and sixteen, and, uh, we can refund, pay off the old bonds, issue new bonds for the same term, and, uh, pretty significantly cut our interest rate for the remaining fifteen years. The, the second, uh, borrowing is, is for the planned, uh, construction of the fourth fire station, um, in the city, and, uh, we've got an amount in there that's not to exceed, uh, may, may change before we actually issue the debt, uh, that number may be lower, uh, doubt that it would be higher, uh, but again, it's a not to exceed amount. Then the third issue is, um, for a project that, uh, we had, uh, contemplated, uh, related to the, uh, roof repairs at, uh, the Public Works Facility. The two new money issues, the four million and the four hundred thousand, were anticipated, were budgeted, and were part of both the two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen capital improvement plan, the, uh, refunding issue, I knew we were going to do it, but it's not so much a budget issue, it's just a, uh, a refinancing. Uh, I would recommend, uh, absent any questions, we go to a second reading on, uh, this legislation, I did put a note in there that we are kind of watching with interest, uh, what the Fed's doing, um, the stock market on Friday kinda had an adjustment, pretty big one, somewhat anticipating a, a rate increase, Fed raises the rates a quarter percent, it does potentially bump up, uh, what we'll ultimately pay, it still makes sense to move forward with the, the borrowing, but, uh, uh, maybe something if we get the, the legislation adopted, um, sooner than later, it just gives us a little bit more flexibility to, if need be, uh, go to markets and hopefully, uh, beat any potential rate increase. Entertain any questions you may have.
I know we had some discussion on this at the finance committee meeting, and we requested Dean bring it forward, I didn't, I didn't think that it's necessary, do you think it's necessary not to approve them tonight, Dean, or?
Uh, I don't think it's necessary tonight, we can go, easily go to two meetings, um, and then again, it's not like I've got it outside, you know, the money's not going to be, you know, the fire substation, we're not even gonna start that project for months yet, and, uh, but it's more driven by just, you know, there's a lot of speculation out there what might happen, and especially with our refunding issue, we'll still save money even if the rates do go slightly, but, uh, it'll just be a better interest rate that we get. Normally, uh, with, with, uh, a project like the fire station, it'd probably issue short-term notes and wait till the project was completed to issue the bonds, but again, I wanna try to capture the, the low rate environment we have right now and kinda lock that in.
I know the market took an increase today of over two hundred.
Yeah, it came back a little bit, so.
Came back, uh, after the three hundred and something drop. Okay.
But we can go to a second reading, it's maybe after that, if council's comfortable, it just, we can maybe consider adopting it then.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dean? Okay. Let's move on to item.
Are we really, are we really not gonna adopt this tonight?
That's what I was.
Based on rate increases, when, when we just adopted fifteen developer first readings, you know, whose benefit it is strictly to the developer, it wasn't a pass on the benefit to the citizens into the city, um, possible.
Make a motion.
Rate incre- I mean, really?
Well, what is the, uh, I mean, from what I heard, from what I've been reading, the, the, the Fed isn't expected to do anything in the real short term still.
No, they won't do anything for probably out of their.
Right. My, my point is, this, this is the reason you suspend rules, this is the reason, it's, you know, but we, we love suspending those for developers, you know, whose benefit is to the developers, but when it comes to the city, and stuff like this, we just, ah, it's for the second reading.
I'm just following what Dean said, he said he didn't see the reason.
And it's just Dean's following rules.
Right, well, and again, it, it, it's.
He's the guest.
It, it could be, but the other thing is that you wanna make sure we have plenty of time to, to, cause I may come back and, and, and have to amend these slightly, uh, whether it be the, the amounts, uh, probably not, but I, you know, it's gonna take us a while until we're ready to actually go with an issue, we've gotta do an official statement, a number of different types of things, so even if we adopted this tonight, I'm probably three, four weeks out before we could actually do an issue, so.
If we adopted, so then.
It's just that if we have to wait, uh, you know, again, another two weeks, uh, after the next council meeting, uh, that's why I said the timing of when we need to get all the paperwork together, it would be, it potentially could be advantageous if we adopted after the second reading.
On the twenty-sixth.
Right.
Right, well, we had discussed it too in finance, and you said probably sometime in October you would bring that.
But, but I think your general point is, it's a.
But right, if, if that, where I would probably be making the pitch to adopt it with an emergency clause tonight, but since I, you know, we need to, we, we've got, uh, other matters.
What are you gonna do?
If you wanna make a question, you're more than welcome to. And item thirty-six is resolution sixteen dash forty-two.
Derek.
Resolution number sixteen dash forty-two, a resolution accepting negotiated changes to the Ohio Council number eight American Federation of State Council Municipal Employees and Local thirty-nine thirty-four Employees Agreement with the City of Delaware.
Thank you.
This is gonna be a very long presentation, uh, we met with the, uh, bargaining unit and, uh, have tentatively agreed to a two percent, two percent, two percent wage package, which is consistent with our other bargaining groups, uh, you'll notice we also are proposing a memorandum of understanding, that wouldn't be part of the contract, but it would basically say we're gonna work together to explore whether to, um, do a midterm, uh, potentially open up, we have an empty slot in our, uh, pay plan where there's no position that fits in it, and we kinda wanna explore going towards our push towards either performance-based pay or, or encouraging folks to get potentially more of the certifications or training, that maybe we could do something with that position, but we're, we're not anywhere near doing that yet, but that's something we're gonna like maybe work towards for the next couple of years, also, we're gonna work about, talk about maybe exploring an alternative, uh, schedule, uh, Dean could probably chime in on this one, but his department, in particular, the, uh, Finance and Utilities Department has a lot of people, and, um, there might be a possibility of expanding the hours, um, but working less days, which will provide more service for the public, but again, that's a, a major change that we need to really talk about, so the MOU just says, we'll continue to work on that, any change we actually do come to, would come back to council, so we will not be doing anything without you knowing about it.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Stelzer?
Oh, and the last thing I would say is the, uh, bargaining unit, uh, did vote to accept these changes already.
I move for the adoption of the resolution sixteen forty-three, that's submitted, second.
Motion by Mr. Degenova, second by Mr. Schaefer, roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Degenova?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
And item thirty-seven is consideration of resolution sixteen dash forty-three.
Resolution number sixteen dash forty-three, a resolution adopting the two thousand seventeen through two thousand and twenty-one five-year capital improvement program.
Thank you.
This, uh, CIP was submitted to you, uh, pursuant to the charter on August fifteenth, uh, its adoption is required by charter by October fifteenth, we have a scheduled, uh, work session, uh, coming up the first Monday in October, where we will spend a few hours reviewing the, uh, the CIP, uh, plan to, if you can, come to that meeting prepared, if you have questions, if you have any questions in advance about what's in the capital improvement program, this is just the, the plan itself, the appropriation for two thousand seventeen would be, uh, would come with the two thousand seventeen budget that will be submitted to you on November fifteenth, but it is important because it does provide a blueprint for the city's, uh, future capital, uh, capital needs, whether those are, uh, infrastructure, utility department, uh, acquisition of machinery and equipment, things like that, so, uh, we will have, uh, an opportunity as part of that work session to review the, uh, to review the plan in greater detail, and then its adoption is required by, as I say, the fifteenth, so we will look at adopting it on October twelfth, which would be your first meeting in October. So.
Did we set a time yet for that first?
I think it's six-thirty is what was finally agreed to. October third, I think, is the, the date, and yeah, we were looking at, uh, so, that's, uh, it's a month, uh, less than a month away, a few weeks away, so that's what I have, um, they said if there's questions you have about the CIP in advance, uh, just, uh, let, let me know, and we'll make sure that we get those, uh, addressed as part of the work session.
And you all can have your CIPs at your desks as well as electronic presentations at you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, city members support.
Just a couple of items, um, we have the, uh, I wanted to, uh, we were named able, we didn't have our meeting on the, uh, the twenty-second, but I did want to, uh, commend the staff, uh, the mayor, my assistant, Michelle Kohler, and everybody else who made the inaugural Ironman seventy point three such a success, this was a, uh, inaugural event for our community, and I think we put our best foot forward, and, uh, we should be proud of that, and, uh, uh, some changes, minor changes for, uh, for two thousand seventeen, but, uh, really, really pleased with, uh, the way that, uh, the way that came out. The, uh, we mentioned the work session, I know that Councilman Schaefer, uh, with his work on the parking, uh, plan, uh, for downtown, is looking at a work session probably sometime in October, we're gonna try to get a date that works for everybody, uh, but he's recommending that we spend some time, actually, we have got, gotta get a presentation put together, and, and, but there's a lot of recommendations that are part of that plan, and we'll get that on advance, Kep, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that, but that's something that, uh, will be on your, uh, on your, uh, your future schedule, um, and, uh, the moving Delaware forward, uh, our initiative, uh, obviously the levy initiative, uh, we will be, we'll sure, we'll, we're still in the public information mode, uh, and we will be providing information to the public at our, uh, at the fair, as part of our booths, and I think, uh, Mr. Yocum sent something out today, so if you're able to stop in, be part of that, uh, during the fair, either in the days that he suggested, or sometime, uh, else during, uh, during the six days at the fair, uh, that will be there, uh, please do so, we would appreciate it, and then I will be out of the office at the ICMA conference in Kansas City, uh, and will not be at, uh, the next, uh, city council meeting. That's all.
Thanks. Council comments, let's start with Mr. Jones.
I have none, did you get them, I thought, so, I'll pass.
Mr. Dean Chalmers?
Uh, piggybacking on moving Delaware forward, we're meeting tomorrow night at Amada's, uh, the group is.
Five-thirty something.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Better roads for Delaware group, yeah.
Uh, if anyone knows anyone who wants to serve on that committee, I know several of the staff are, uh, I've been attending, uh, George has been.
You're meeting for just a, a, a committee meeting, or is it, uh, public?
It's, it's public also.
This is on everybody's own time.
Anybody's own time.
Are you in the back there, that room in the back of?
Yes, that's tomorrow night, uh, Willowbrook, uh, tomorrow morning, eight to ten, Willowbrook, Willowbrook North is having a breakfast, yeah.
Okay, that's the new, they're showing up their new dining.
We're in a dining room facility, uh, we've all been invited, but I think you had RSVP too, but it's eight to ten, I plan on going to that, and then the Brown Jug Week is gonna be a busy week for everybody, I know I have, I'm on four or five different venues to work the, and I see Lee's, Lee's there to volunteer for the city booth, so I'll be letting you know when I'll be doing that, but I think everybody should get involved in the one for the levy and, and for the city booth also, but, uh, Brown Jug Week is a very busy week, I wanted to know, Bill, is twenty-three Pennsylvania gonna be open for her, they're gonna open something, aren't they, and they're gonna have police out there?
The connector will be open, you won't be able to go northbound twenty-three and turn off, uh, it'll go to the, it's normal fairground access, but the connector will let you on and off twenty-three, it'll be a two-way road, so be aware of that, you probably got it.
Okay. Um, yeah, it's a busy week, and then on Friday, uh, veterans have operation, you never forget, and don't forget, the program's gonna be a lot less than what it was last year, first three years, they're not gonna give all the door prizes and things like that, so it's, used to go three, three and a half hours, it's only gonna be limited to a real nice sit-down dinner and, and that, and we're anticipating four or five hundred people at that, uh, on Friday night. Other than that, uh, thank, are you from Wesleyan, or where are you from?
Hayes.
Hayes?
Hayes.
Hayes, I didn't know, someone looked a little older.
AP go.
Okay, any questions for the group, do, do we, we, we go through different things, we suspend the rules, like, like, uh, Councilman Jones says on certain things, certain things we don't, we have a thing here that we're supposed to go by, we have emergency clauses and things like that, so, I know I used to go up there and, and, uh, teach youth in government, when we had the youth in government program through the city, it's now through the Y, but, uh, it's always a good program also, if you have any questions, feel free to call any of us. We kinda buzz through it. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Uh, three things, the Delaware County Coalition of Victim Services hosts every year a five K run, it's gonna be on October the ninth at Liberty Park, registration of K thirty and race of five thirties for a good cause, it's twenty-five bucks, but I have information, flyers I can get, A one one, so, um, but it's a good cause, you get a shirt, and you don't have to run, I walk it every year, and so it's, I'm not a runner, so, and I hear there's a legend of a torpedo tom, that, that Delaware reservoir now.
What?
We gotta put a sign up, he was, uh, swimming in the Ironman, by the Ironman, so. Uh, second thing, I was at a check presentation today for Turning Points Campaign, Chief Pedenowski was there, Delaware County is the largest county in Ohio, that does not have a dedicated domestic violence shelter, but we're changing that, we're gonna have one now, and Turning Points opening at, it's a five hundred meter community, I believe, the, the churches, so they are trying to raise two point three million dollars, I think it is, so, and it's being done through the United Way, so anybody and everybody that can contribute is a good cause. And then, uh, finally, the Northwest Neighborhood Association residents, and, uh, a lot of my constituents would like to pursue the option of having lights in the trees in downtown Delaware year-round, and, uh, so I guess, I was, I was gonna mention that earlier when you were talking about flowers, cause I think that would be, but if we could start a, a dialogue for that, and then get that put into the budget, if, uh, if there's a consensus with council for that.
I know after Christmas I had mentioned that Tom was leaving the lights on, and, uh, about.
Can do it.
Two months later, they were coming down, and I thought we were gonna leave them on, so, I hope they do, it looks, makes it look really pretty downtown, it's inexpensive to do.
I think with the new LED technology, it's getting even less, less.
Cheaper to run.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hollinger?
I had an interesting phone call the other day from a gentleman who, uh, refused to give his name and his location because he was afraid we were going to, uh, terminate, have, have some type of retribution against him, um, long and short, I would have said that, you know, he's a very successful man, retired at the age of fifty-two, and he has so much money to just buy and sell people like me all day long, and so it was a very fun phone call, but, uh, this gentleman who was, uh, very successful, and, uh, just, uh, a legend, financial legend in his own mind, was, um, concerned about the fifty-dollar utility deposit, uh, that was the whole premise of his call, so, uh, just wanted to bring that up, he thought that, uh, because he was a resident, former resident of Columbus, as he said, he never had to pay a utility deposit anywhere before, and he doesn't understand why our local city requires a utility deposit, and, uh, man, and to, um, try and quote him, "A man of his position should not have to pay such a thing, should be exempt from such a thing." So with that, I just wanted to bring that up, and let that go to utilities, uh, Public Utilities Committee for, um, their review in the future, so.
Do you still have his phone number?
No, he would not give me his phone.
Oh, I was gonna say, cause.
No, no phone number, no location, he does.
We were gonna give him.
If he's such a prestigious fellow, you know, we only need four hundred thousand.
I asked him what his position was, and he would not tell me.
We only need four hundred thousand for the eighties memorial.
Well, waive the utility fee.
Yeah, I'll pay the fifty dollars.
Should I have?
That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you, just to follow up on Tom's comment regarding the parking studies, you know, we've had the San Diego project, and they've really done, the company's done a very thorough, very good job, done a lot of research, the backs are fighting, so, they presented their final reports, drafted what final report does several weeks ago, we recommended some changes, one of the things that we're asking you to do is to kinda break things down into immediate things we can do, short-term like one to two years, then longer-term stuff, and also give us cost breakdowns on those, so, we'll be meeting with them, I think, next week, is that right?
Yeah.
Twentieth.
Twentieth, yeah. Long story short is, we, we wanna bring it then to council with, uh, recommendations, and it's gonna require the dirty word retrieved, because you really need to hear the research so that the recommendations make sense, and so we, we tentatively looked at, at October twenty-ninth, if that's a date that works for everybody else, we'll do it in the morning, I would say it will be probably two, two, three hours by the time they, they'll spend a better part of an hour still presenting their recommendation, or their research and everything, and the recommendations, and I'm sure they'll wanna be some discussion following that, so, if everybody wants to check that date.
And the twenty-second, I think, twenty-second and the twenty-ninth, I think, unless that didn't.
Uh, the twenty, yeah, yeah, you're right, twenty-second, twenty, twenty.
Yeah, let's see, do the twenty-second for sure.
Yeah, I can't do the twenty-second either.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, fine.
September?
Yes, no, I.
I called.
I'm okay, I might be.
Is that near the same day as?
Maybe in hospital.
YMCA does something with, for Halloween, that Saturday morning.
City Halloween.
City Halloween party.
We would do this in the morning, I think. Shouldn't.
Right, and what time are they doing all that? It'll be in the early afternoon, I think you're on.
Okay, perfect.
What time?
Does the twenty-ninth, if that, ten twenty-nine, will we, in the morning, probably nine to twelve?
Yeah.
Are we good with that date?
It'll work, you guys? Yeah, I'll do that, yeah.
Are you doing here?
Yes, it's a work, you're really a work session.
You said nine to noon?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I have, I have one more.
Oh, you can't.
Yeah, uh, I just thought about it when I was saying this, uh, Mike, chairperson of the Social Service. Asked Mike, well, he asked to resign, he's moving out, we need to get a replacement.
I'm working on it, I've been interviewing.
I didn't know what I needed, the other guy's Mike, that's all.
I think I have somebody.
Okay, good.
Um, your finance committee is meeting at five-thirty?
Yes.
Is there any possibility you can move that a little bit later?
Yeah, I'd like to move it to the next moment, but.
Well, I've been like six-thirty. Six or six-thirty, instead of five-thirty?
I don't care, I, I, I already changed my schedule.
Okay.
I think, oh, Ken, I said was it five, it was too early.
Yeah.
Okay.
The time later the better for me.
Six-thirty?
Six.
Six o'clock?
Six, okay, six o'clock.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Well, I would just like to thank staff, though your team was just phenomenal through Ironman, they worked so hard, I just, they were wonderful, and police and fire, I mean, everybody, this, I could not have gotten more compliments on our city staffs, I really, really appreciate it, and then yesterday with the all-horse parade, I mean, you guys did a fabulous job, the way I looked, there was somebody from the city working on something, so, and today was a beautiful day in Delaware, and I was just really proud of it, so, thank you all for your hard work. And with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned at eight-fifty.